Educating, informing, serving. TV, keeping government honest.
Hey, we've got a call, so we're going to call the meeting for the Bellows Falls Junior High School School District to order. Adjustments to the agenda, where we're going to, our RHR Smith is going to be here tonight to give us a report on what they found to tighten this agenda up a little bit, just so that we don't feel like we're rushed at the end. We're just going to take out the unfinished. And we will make sure that goes on the next agenda. We, we have been working on both of those subjects, but we just want to try to clean things up a little bit. The other stuff we've got to get through. Our, I got review and approve board minutes for January 10th. Anybody get January 10th? Minutes where they've had a chance to look them over? It's going to be them on the way, sorry. Did anybody see anything wrong with January 10th minutes? I'm getting nothing. Want to give me a?
Molly, this is Margot. I'll make a motion to accept the January 10th minutes as presented.
Okay. We'll take a roll call from where is, we're going to try to approve January 10th minutes. David? Is that a yes?
That's a yes.
Ian? Can't hear you, Ian.
Okay, I'm going to abstain because I wasn't there.
Margot?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Priscilla?
Yes.
Motion passes to approve the board minutes for January 10th, 2021, uh, 2022. As presented.
Oh, it does say 2021.
It does.
Wait, just do some 21.
Well, it was board minutes for 2022.
It was.
Yeah. That's just on the agenda, though. It was not on the minutes.
No, the minutes are correct. I just checked them.
Okay, communication and public comments. I just would make one comment, just so everybody knows, I received an envelope with six letters in it, and none of them are signed. After speaking with the superintendent, without them being signed, we're not going to read them tonight. They are about a subject that is probably going to come up on the March 28th board meeting. And if there are any of the people that left these letters are in the audience and they want to speak, we certainly would like to hear from them. But without names on those letters, we're, we're not going to read them right now. Is there anybody in the?
I do not see anyone.
Okay. So is our RHR Smith here?
They are.
Okay, they have the floor.
Brittany and Miranda.
Hi, everybody. My name's Brittany from RHR Smith. I'm the Director of Support Services and also an Audit Manager, Assistant Miranda, who is also here with the engagement this year. Miranda is the main audit manager. So she's going to give you a presentation tonight with what we call a short report. Andy, does everybody have a copy of that? Or no? Okay, not yet.
I'll send it out as you're doing.
Okay, so Andy will send this to electronically. Miranda will share her screen. So, okay, so Miranda will share her screen as well. And this, this is a, we call it a short report because it's essentially a selection of financial statements that people find most informative or the boards find most informative without some of the notes in the back. So, and those will come after. So we're still working on a timeline for the full reports, but this, I think, should give some information about what everyone really usually wants to know, which is fund balance. We'll talk about that. We'll talk about some of the items that we found in terms of internal controls, things that we had to work through, some of the challenges this year and how to move forward. So I'm going to turn it over to Miranda. We'll definitely open up at the end for questions and we'll go from there.
Thank you, Brittany. She said, my name's Miranda McDonald and I've been working.
Miranda, you're, you're really quiet. I don't, you're.
Okay.
There you go. Okay.
My name's Miranda McDonald. I've been working with Wind of Northeast for the past couple of years and doing the audit. Brittany was able to help me this year, which was great. So as she said, this is our short report. We've pulled out a couple of statements and schedules that will show your financials from the full audit report. The first statement we're going to start with is the balance sheet for your governmental funds, Statement C, that'll be in the full audit. The first fund, I usually have this a little smaller. There we go. The first column is going to be the general fund. And I know everybody asks what your fund balance is for the end of the year. So if we look down in this first column, almost to the, all the way to the bottom, this group of numbers right here is going to be your fund balance. So for FY21, you did end the year with $892,000 in fund balance. Of that, 313 is committed in capital projects. $53,000 is assigned for timber sales and enrichment from previous warnings that were voted on. And then leaving you an unassigned fund balance of $525,000. The Haver Foundation is a major fund for Bellows Falls High School. And you can see it has a restricted fund balance of $237,000. This means it's restricted to be spent on the per, what the purpose is of the foundation. The Capital Reserve Fund has $46,000 in it. And then your other governmental funds is made up of some special revenue funds that in your full audit will have additional schedules in the back that will show the different columns of the, of your special revenue funds, but it's like E-rate and you have a Benwin Sports Fund as well. Statement E is the statements of revenues, expenditures, and your change in fund balance. So for your general fund, you had revenues of 7.6 million. Your expenditures were 7.1 million. And then you transferred out $46,000. This was the voted on at the March town meeting. So it was moved to the Capital Reserve Fund, which when you, which leaves you a net change in fund balance of the $460,000, moving you from 432 to the $892,000. Schedule one is going to show your actuals compared to the budget that was adopted. So you start off with what the beginning budget, beginning fund balance. And then you have your revenue budget and your revenue actuals. This $70,000 was budgeted to use fund balance surplus. So that's why you don't see an actual amount there, just the budget. And then you have your expenditures compared to the approved budget. So you underspent expenditures by $556,000 this year. I will be honest with you, that is not unusual. Many schools, because of COVID, have seen an increase in fund balances for FY21. It was a very unusual year and expenditures weren't quite the same as normal. Some other things that we saw, another piece of that under expending is health insurance. At the SU, we found it and it carried through to each school. So, and what it is was the employer portion was charged more than what should have been charged. And so when we caught it, we moved it back and reduced your expenditures. So for Bellows Falls, that was about $300,000. Which is one of the, one of the things we caught in doing our audit this year. We did hire, or excuse me, y'all hired Christine Balk to come back and help with the FY21 audit. She was instrumental in reconciling some asset accounts and liability accounts so that we were able to work through and get to your actual numbers. With that, Brittany, did you have anything else you wanted to say?
Yeah, so I think in our analysis, we believe that there were some budgeting errors related to health insurance. So when we initially looked at the budget to actual, the health insurance expenditure number did not seem wild. But when we started to get into reconciling the health insurance liability account, which is sort of, I would describe it as a holding pot where the funds sit before they're paid to be high. We felt that that number, you know, it didn't look right. It looked radically different than prior years. And so that's when we started to look into it and discovered that the employer deduction was not set up correctly. So as Miranda said, we moved the expenditures out, but we think that, you know, our analysis shows that part of the reason why you under expended so greatly was likely because the budgeting for health insurance was done, was done incorrectly or inaccurately, probably based on those deductions. So. Go ahead, Miranda. Oh.
Oh, I was going to, the other thing I wanted to touch on, at the SU, we did an analysis of the assessment reconciliation and the SU also had a fund balance there. And when the analysis came in, Bellows Falls was going to get about $500,000 returned from over assessment. But that is not included in these numbers that will be settled in FY22. So I know that had been a discussion at a previous meeting for the SU. That.
Do you have more, Miranda, or does that conclude?
I don't.
Okay.
So that concludes mine.
Okay, so just, you know, kind of taking us back a little bit. We did find, as, as Miranda said, material misstatements in the payroll liabilities specifically in the area of health insurance. This sort of hearkens back to a letter that we wrote in December, sort of giving an update on the audit. So we did find that. We found sort of SU-wide issues with expense distributions, you know, things not being coded correctly. We did find, although I don't think that this was the case for Bellows Falls, issues with assessments and assessments not being recorded correctly. So there were a lot of adjustments to make. This report reflects those adjustments. So we believe that at this time, this is fairly stated. So we've made the corrections that we have identified as needing to be made. We also continue to find many of the same issues that we discussed in the management letter last year. So the management letter is where we would note things that we found that were either problems with internal controls or where best practice was not being followed and/or not following your own policies and procedures. So, you know, some of, some of those items included general ledger reconciliations, issues with not looking at what's on the general ledger and making sure that it's reconciled. So that's kind of what happened with payroll issues. You know, some issue is in general with documentation and just being able to pull things. And then not making entries timely, you know, in relation to things like bank reconciliations. So finding errors, but then not actually making the adjustments in the general ledger. So we continue to find some of those issues and work through some of those issues.
Brittany, this is Andy. Could you just clarify when you said the management letter that was sent last year? When that was sent?
Yeah, so that would have been part of the audit. Looks like.
The audit, correct?
Yep, the, it would have been FY20, so it was issued in January of 2021. There was one letter that was issued. It was a management letter for the entire SU and its member districts. Not uncommon for us to do that with SUs because it's one business office. And if we're finding the issue in one, we're typically finding it in all the entities because the processes are generally the same.
Thank you.
So I guess, you know, at this time, we're happy to answer questions. If we don't have the answer offhand, we can, we can look into it more and get, get it to Andy so we can get it back to you. I guess I'll let the board, the board chair call on folks.
David?
Yes, Brittany, when do we expect you to complete the audit?
Yeah, so that's one of the things that I'm waiting for an answer on. So we have completed our fieldwork, so now it's just a matter of compiling the notes that go in the back. So I need to get back to you on that. I need to check with our financial statement preparation department and we'll let Andy know and he can get back to you.
Can you give us a three-month window, please?
What, I'm sorry, I don't understand the question.
I said, can you give us a window of, say, three months as to when we might see it?
Yeah, I would expect that you would see it in March.
March, March, is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you, Brittany.
You're welcome.
Does anyone else have questions for RHR or Brittany or for Miranda? Priscilla?
I'm trying to take it again quickly. I didn't get it ahead of time, so. So our fund balance is how much?
Your unassigned fund balance, can you scroll up to that Statement C?
Is that 500?
Yep, that's your, yep.
No, I don't think so. So we don't, um, thank you very much, Brittany and Miranda. I thought that there'd be, Jack Breyer's not here. He probably would have had a lot more questions. But, um, thank you for presenting that and, yeah, Priscilla's got one question.
Okay, so if I'm looking at the unassigned balance of 525,643, and then I'm going down to the next page and I see fund balance on July 1st as 432,291, why are those so different? What is missing there? Does that make sense? What I'm asking?
Yeah, yep, so that's your, that was your, the first two columns are budgeted. So that's just looking at your original and revised budgets. And then the actual column is the 892,374, which is your total fund balance. So that's not just your unassigned. So that includes the committed, the assigned, and the unassigned. So if you look at total fund balances, that 892,374, that matches. Right, on the actual column. So the 432,291 was your beginning fund balance, essentially. This schedule, I think, is a little misleading in the sense that you didn't necessarily budget to spend that, right? But that is your beginning fund balance. So if you look at the page before Statement E, you can see toward the bottom, fund balance July 1, that's 432,291. And then the change to 892,374.
I'm sorry, I didn't look at the data or I would have been able to answer.
Absolutely, I totally understand. And we'll be back, we'll be back to present the full report, so, and you'll have more lead time to look at that. And you, if you have questions in the interim, we're happy to address them if you, you know, give them to Andy. He can let us know if things come up as you're sleeping on it tonight or thinking about it.
Okay, I guess my question for you, Molly, is that, you know, we're seeing all of the expenditures in our reports that we worked on for budget. Do we, are those printed out with revenues in the report that is getting handed out from the central office?
I would assume so, but I haven't seen anything but the articles. I mean, we must have a high school report going out with all of that information on it?
Well, we didn't have the short report, so we, I mean, that's not going out.
Right, but you got the.
But the revenues?
Whatever we had available, yes, that we were able to pull out.
And are those available yet?
Yes.
Okay.
Where can we pick those up?
Do you have some, John?
I know that Nicole picked them up today and was going to be distributing them out.
Okay.
So.
So they'll be at the town halls and at the schools?
Yes.
Okay.
I think at the Opera House, I can't remember where she told me she was going. The drop sink though.
Okay.
But it's just one.
Right.
It was cheaper to do one report instead of like different ones for each building.
Okay, so school reports will be out in the public by tomorrow, by the sounds. Miranda and Brittany, thank you very much. This is always very helpful for everybody to see and be able to ask the questions if they have it. Appreciate your time.
Yeah, no problem. We will see you soon.
Have a good evening.
You too. Oh.
Okay, we're down to reports, principal report.
Okay, not too much going on. We're early in the second semester. First semester completed. Winter sports, basketball, indoor track seasons continue. Well, the indoor track just finished last week. We had one of our young ladies finish fifth in the overall indoor state track 3K race. Our boys in basketball are now 12 and 3 and having a very good season. They're playing at Mill River tonight, which hopefully will be 13 and 3 by tomorrow. The girls are playing tonight at, let me see, Leyland and Gray, I believe, Green Mountain, one of those two, and they are 3 and 15 right now. Their season finishes this week. We're going to wrap up, must be Leyland and Gray, because they're going to wrap up with Green Mountain, hopefully on Saturday, if we can rearrange that game in. The Green Mountain canceled due to, due to COVID protocols. Our protocol for basketball games has been followed very well. We kept it in line and to the point where, you know, we did have, the VPA asked us to think about increasing a little bit to show equity for away fans in order that we would then be able to host a playoff game. And with the record we have, our boys are looking, and I'm going to jinx it though, looking to finish in the top four, which would mean two home games. So we're, we've been allowing away fans, four per player. I believe the most we had, 10 from a visiting team, was 15 fans. So it's, it's not, it's not showing a robust number and bursting the seams in the gym. So hopefully, our goal is that we will look for the home, the two home senior games to allow some students to come in as well in a student section as well, which we will put out, we're going to put a signup out for tomorrow's game and then a sign up for Saturday's game on Friday. People are being very sensible and I will say, we are one of few, if not the only school that hasn't lost any games to COVID. We have not had to cancel any of our home games due to our COVID numbers or COVID protocols. So I'm pretty proud of that. Done a good job. Everyone's worked well and they've followed directions. So. Our vaccination status, the nurse put that out, I think it was the end of last week, Friday, they continue to strive to get the accurate percentages. Friday, it was, for students was 67% and for staff and teach, staff and teachers, the level was 98%. This Wednesday, we have an early release day. We're already thinking about the class of 2026 and we're continuing with our transition process where on Wednesday, we invite the, certainly all the middle school come via a bus and we've invited the other 20 to 22 kids that can come to our great school to come and register. And they'll, they'll come in the afternoon, we're going to do a presentation in the auditorium and they will have three time slots to register. Our school counselors have already gone over to visit the middle school and looked at recommendations already and set up the tentative schedules for staff to process with each student and their parents. So hopefully we'll keep this process smooth and going the way it has for years. HVAC update today, we looked at bids for, to be able to select an engineer after sending out a very intense RFP, RFQ. And we had a couple of those that the Buildings and Grounds Committee will meet. I believe that's on the 3rd of March to discuss which engineer we may go for. And I know Andy was looking to write up the project specs in the hope that we might get Essar approval to pay for that as well. So that's it for me for tonight. And then we've got our big meeting on the 23rd.
Yeah, I just got a couple of questions for him.
Yep.
So I just got a couple of questions, John. I had forwarded and I just want to make sure that, you know, Jason Terry didn't think I left him out, but we, I honestly thought RHR was going to take a lot more time and so I tried to shorten things up for everybody tonight, but. So Jason was unable to come today. He's watching his son play basketball and he had a couple of questions. What the mask, what is the mask plan after winter break? What is the plan to remove masks? I know we discussed, but I'd like to get a sense of they have, if they have a plan. So maybe you can answer that, you've seen that, but.
We have a talk about this and I'm going to.
That's what I was going to piggyback on a little bit.
I'll defer to my boss, yeah.
So on, on last Thursday, Secretary French had indicated that the AOE will not be updating or their mask mandate. And what that means is they will still require, they're still recommending that masks be required for schools that are not 80% of the eligible students vaccinated. And so here, we're like, at the high school, where it's at 67%. If, if, you know, on May, on March 2nd, the eligible students at the high school were to hit 80%, then we could, you, we could look at rescinding or removing the mask mandate and make, you know, turning it to a recommendation. I also had a conversation with four students today about developing a survey that we're going to put out to families, staff. uh, staff and students, we're gonna, we're gonna target, um, middle school through high school. Um, to just get a sense of, of how, how comfortable people are, where are people at, at moving towards, um, making a recommendation to boards on whether we should maintain or continue, um, you know, wearing masks, so, um, you know, we wanted to get that input, because, you know, you always hear from a couple of people, but you don't, we, so we wanted to really put something out there, and I wanted it to come from students, because number one, I think it's more authentic and genuine. Uh, but number two, the students are gonna, they're gonna control the data. So it's not anything that's gonna be manipulated by administration or, or, you know, any party, so.
Hmm.
So that, that, that's kind of our plan. They are signaling at some time, the, they're going to completely rescind the mask mandate, but they haven't set a date for that, so.
Okay, so the next thing, just, oh, go ahead.
I'm sorry, um, one question that P D gave on that, is, is the number include the staff and the students or just eighty percent for?
It is eighty percent of the eligible students, and it's worded that way because some schools might have a preschool population that aren't eligible, um, for vaccination, so. Um, so it is, at, at first it was the entire population, and now they're, they're moving to eighty percent of student, uh, eligible students.
So before I move on to, uh, the next item on Jason's list, David, do you have your hand up?
Thank you, Molly, I do have my hand up, can you hear me okay? Good. Question for John Broadley. John, what's the drop dead date for limited school, high school choice? Whereby students, uh, within the Bellows Falls Union High School District can opt to go to other high schools, that would certainly be, uh, out migration. And I'm also, uh, would like to know what that number looks like and what a number would look like for in migration, are those questions you can answer tonight, John?
I'm fairly confident, David, so far, but again, I don't know any that are in transit, it's, uh, not with us yet. So far, we have four migrating out, none migrating in. And I believe it's April fourteenth is the closing date when schools decide, so far.
Thank you, John.
We have one that I've told, that's an eighth grader, that we have told that they need to do the school choice.
To come in?
Yes.
Okay, so the next thing on Jason's list, and, and I'm just gonna answer it, because we, we had some emails today. Um, HVAC update, just for everybody, so they know, there's a Building and Grounds Committee meeting on March third at six thirty. And, um, his question was, when is work starting and what is the plan to go after previous vendor, if any? I don't have those answers right now, but I, I feel pretty confident that on March third, that we'll have a good discussion on, on both of those items.
Yeah.
Um, the next item was parking lot update. I, we have no updates now, but we can talk about it at that Building and Grounds Committee meeting. Uh, number four was, do we know where we stand on national rank of schools? Last year, we were mid-teens, have we improved or not? What is teacher to student ratio? Okay, so let's answer the first thing here.
Okay.
Do we know where we stand on national ranking of schools?
The News and World reports, uh, I believe, I'll have to check exactly, but results don't come out for the previous year, so in other words, FY twenty-one results, we should see a reflection of where we are by April, I believe it is.
So we don't even see anything for this school year till next year.
Till next year, yeah, so.
Um, and then what is teacher to student ratio, I think you got that, oh yeah?
Uh, we, I put that out, we talked about that at the last meeting. Let's have a little while to find this document in this mire, we were thirteen point seven to one uh, student to teacher ratio, and the latest figures that I could find nationally were fourteen point seven to one, and that was in two thousand eighteen, before the pandemic. So, uh, I, I can't make a, any other comment on that, so we're slightly uh, higher or lower, depending which way you look at it, than the national average, but not far off it.
I think we talked about this at the last meeting also, but, um, is there a planned next year curriculum to add an online credit or credits for course?
We are, we haven't, we haven't approached the master schedule yet, and within the coordinators, which is our leadership group in the building, we, what we want to do is if we are gonna put an online credit, uh, we've had minimal conversation about it so far, but if we want to put online credit, we're gonna look at actually having a, having a course that would teach the kids how to do online credit, because as we've seen in this pandemic, kids struggle with online stuff in general, there are some kids that are great at it, some kids don't do any of it, and the, the, the majority are not great at it, so that, that would be what I would say right now, but I haven't, I haven't furthered that anymore, but that, that'll be a conversation within our, our coordinators group to see where, where we would like to put it, and where, where if it could go and who would, who would administer it. And predicting the English department will take that on.
And you'll get back to us.
I'll get back to you on that before we go to master scheduling.
Okay, we're almost done, I hope Jason's listening.
Can I piggyback on that?
Yep, go ahead.
Uh, Sean, have you considered, um, doing the language class with an online component instead of the teacher, because when you've got two students in a class, as I saw in several of those language classes, that does not give the students interaction with others to develop the language or do anything else, whereas an online class would give them that interaction with a larger group of students to be able to discuss the language.
We, we have looked at it, we surveyed, we surveyed students, I don't know if I still have that one up there. Um, we did survey students about what languages they would like to take, and my next plan is to then survey and, and find a, a vehicle that we might have to do it online, or hope is that we will get a, a half-time language person in to be able to teach.
But if there's only two people in a class, that's not enough to interact and do a language development, that's, that's my big concern, I saw, I saw twos and fives and sevens, I think the most that you gave me was maybe seven in those classes.
Seven.
Yeah, I got it. Um, language, yeah, seven, nine, two, two, and five.
Yeah.
Were the ones that were on here, and when you get in two, two, and even five, that's, that's really not enough to get your language going. And so.
Oh, it would be to those five, it would be to those five.
To those five, possibly, but those aren't maybe ones that will even be wanting to take it next year, because they've already taken that class, so you may not, you may have less students.
Yeah.
So to me, you know, if you could offer something where they've got enough students to interact, it would be much more beneficial for those students.
Right, we will, we will, no, we will survey, we will survey, and I will report further outcomes of, when we move on further. What master schedule?
Okay, we all good, I got one more to go.
Thanks, Molly.
Jason put me, put me to work tonight. So number six is, this is, I'm gonna read the whole thing, but it's kind of got some questions inside it. What do we have available for exceptional students? There is many students who are exceptional, who are getting lost in COVID, and we never discuss what they are going through. We do a good job of pushing them down to mediocre while raising the bottom. I'd like to discuss how to raise up the top performers also. So I'm not sure, he wants to talk to John about that, or do you wanna speak to that, John, or?
Uh, I, I did briefly talk with our counseling department, because I, I found that was kind of an unjust claim. Uh, but I wanted to make sure that I wasn't just being defensive. Um, we do have, looking at the facts, we have seven AP classes, seven AP offerings. Uh, we have three, three students who have, um, taken advantage of early college this year. And that is paid for by the state. We have.
Except full time?
Three, yeah.
How many?
Three.
Three, wow, that's great.
We have three dual enrollment classes, uh, we do need to increase that more, and that's another goal of mine uh, down in the next two to three years. Um, we have a few kids, two or three kids that have taken UVM courses that they've been encouraged by counseling to do, and they've been paid for by the state as well. And we do have some of our upper level kids who, for whatever reason, and, um, Jason's aware of one of them, that was able to take a, one of the students that was able to take a summer course, uh, AP Calculus, because he couldn't fit it into his schedule, because of what he wanted to take, and sports as well, so I, I, I wouldn't say we don't, oh, could we get better, we can always get better. Uh, but I do think that, or we're, okay for our applicants, I think they're doing pretty well.
Molly, if I can add, John, because I, I just, I don't, uh, independent study, do we, do we have students?
Yes.
Do they have the opportunity to do independent study, and then?
Yes.
When you talk about dual enrollment, um, are those courses that we're offering, like through Running Start? So our teachers are actually, they're teaching the course, and then it's, and then, um, and so the student takes our course, but it is for college credit, yes, and then, um,
No, just Running Start, those CCVs.
Right, right, thank you, and then with, with the, the students, you, you mentioned three, are they like taking a course at a college?
Castleton College, yeah, actually they're, they're taking six.
So they're fully enrolled as?
Yes.
Okay, so then, I guess, I just want, I'm just trying, as far as students who might take, like, one of their classes might be at a college, do we have a number, any number of students?
Those, two students have taken UVM courses, um, in classes that we don't, eh, we don't, we don't have, and it was, um.
Oh, no, I was thinking like King State or even, you know, or, or River Valley, if, if they, if they wanted to.
Uh, I know we often, uh, default to UVM, because they have a good program there and, and kids wanna do that.
Yeah, that's just all.
A junior who did a course last summer, she's a junior this year, she's really motivated, um, I believe it's in computer science, and she took a UVM class this, last summer, and is looking to do another one this summer, so, again, she's been encouraged to move in that direction.
Thank you.
Did she do that in person then, or did she do it remote?
Did it in person in the summer, yeah, yeah, she loved it.
Yeah, no, I'm thinking of kids who, um, at other schools, we had, uh, other high schools that I've worked at, we had students who, part of their daily schedule was they went to, you know, when Marlboro had its, you know, they would go up to Marlboro, or they might go to SIT and actually take a course, uh, it's, uh, pre-COVID and stuff like that, but more access to things, um, and then just to, to piggyback on that a little bit, uh, we have a meeting coming up with a gentleman, uh, Mike Stack, who's, uh, reached out to us, uh, looking to develop, you know, some programming, um, for students who maybe aren't interested in necessarily going right into college, but going into some type of, of trade, uh, but in building that up, and I think that's a, a population of our students that we, you know, that even high flying kids might take advantage of, because it's the application of the learning. And so we're, we have a meeting coming up with them, I've spoken with them, I know that Mr. Murphy's spoken with them, so, uh, it's exciting where this might actually go for our students, so.
All right, thank you very much, I'm, I'm gonna report back to Jason if he isn't listening. Uh, we have no finance report tonight. Uh, report, committee reports. Um, we, I have a policy committee scheduled for Wednesday at five thirty, is that correct, Priscilla?
Right, um, they've been really busy, they, um, we have, um, well, we have some policies on there tonight that were already approved by the SU that will be approved under new business, but they've also met and they have B three, B four, B eight, C one, C three, C four, and C five are completed already, they were posted yesterday, and they will be ready for the SU to approve in ten days, because they have to be on there. Uh, they have to be out and posted for ten days before they can, and then we'll bring them to each of the other boards. Um, we also have, will be working on about six or seven other policies on Wednesday night, and we've assigned them out, so. They're really moving, we're trying to get that up to date, because, um, uh, and looking at the ones that have been approved in, in the past, we're looking at, a lot of them were not, were approved back two thousand nine or earlier, and they're supposed to be on a three to five year, um, rotating basis, so somewhere or other, they haven't been being done through the last superintendents, so Andy's really got us going, and we're really working on those to get those up to date, so.
And then, thank you, Priscilla, and then we have Building and Grounds Committee will meet March third at six thirty. And we're gonna move on to new business, and I'm gonna ask Andy to speak to the written approval to move forward with a circuit breaker project.
Yeah, so, um, thank you, uh, so one of, with the Essar, um, funds, uh, we have to do is push up this, if, if we're if we're doing any kind of construction, we have to do, get, we have to do a construction application, so we, we pushed it up and got concept approval. And so then the concept approval comes back and says, yep, we approve this, uh, go ahead and start your RFP and do all those things. And, um, and so then, then we move into the project phase, and so then the next thing we have to push up is we have to push up a, we have to show proof of title of the building, uh, so, uh, right now, we're, we're working on getting that. These are all good things that we, we should have available to us, but, you know, we have to go search for them now, but, and then the other, um, piece we have to have is approval from the board uh, to go ahead with the project, which is to replace and repair the circuit breaker, um, so that is one of the things, and then, um, and then we push up the, the plans and the, and, and the RFP and, and whatnot, so. So we are looking just for approval from the board, um, to go ahead with, and we can, what we can do is share the minutes when we get them, uh, so we don't need anything in physical writing, but we'd need a, a motion to approve the work, the circuit, the, what, repair and replace the circuit breaker.
Yeah, yeah, it's, uh, it, it's repairing the whole circuitry so, and software that will allow us to then be able to use our generators, uh, for emergency and for demand response, which will just support a safer, really, so.
Can I get a motion?
Hi Molly, I, I move that we approve, uh, the circuit breaker project. So that it can be in writing.
Excuse me. Does anybody have any questions?
Is that being, that's being done through Essar?
And I think it's about a two hundred and fifty, maybe that, that shouldn't quote it like that, I'm trying to think. It was a two, it was, it was.
Two twenty, right?
I was gonna say, it's a couple hundred thousand dollar project, so.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to approve to move forward with the circuit breaker project, David?
Yes.
Priscilla?
Yes.
Ian?
Yes.
Margot?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Perfect, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Priscilla, you got the floor.
Okay.
Policies.
Yes, uh, these are policies that have been approved at the SU level, and now as a member district of the, of the supervisory union, because it says members, supervisory union and its member districts. Um, they need to be approved at each one of the boards, I think we're the last ones to approve it, because I know Rockingham has, and I believe the union um, elementary has, so the ones for tonight that we are approving are A one, B one, A one, which is Board Member Conflict. um, elementary has, so the ones for tonight that we are approving are A1, B1, A1, which is board member conflict of interest, B1, substitute teachers, B2, volunteers and work-study students, B5, employee unlawful harassment, B7, tobacco prohibition, and C6, home study students. So I would make a motion that we approve those policies.
It, it, can I just, um, at the Union Elementary Board, um, there were a couple of typos that we noted as we were going through, and so,
Okay.
Um, if, if we can move forward with them with the, with the friendly amendment that we will update it, so there were things where it says the district later on, and we should have had Windham Northeast and its member districts.
I think we left the district and one of them, and felt that it was adequate.
The Union Elementary really pushed, so, so, so we made, they made that adjustment, so
They can make that in theirs as well.
I, I'm just trying to keep them uniformed, and that, and that's
It doesn't have to be uniform, the districts can all do them all different.
I, I understand that, I, I would like to try and have as much uniformity as possible, so, um, but that's, that's the only thing I
I can look quick.
If, if that's okay with folks, but I don't think it's a major.
A1, let's see. I can probably tell you where. I think because there wasn't, in, in any of the ones that the state wants them to have, the, the Union District and the other, they've left a space, and when they didn't, and they just put the district, like in B6, it does say for all schools in the district, um, because that's schools in the district, and the SU and its member districts does not have, you know, the, the supervisory union does not have schools, but the, each of the districts does, so that's why it just says the district there. And that one uh, can look.
I honestly didn't bring them with me, sorry.
And B5, just as employee by the, and company by the school district, it does say that in that one too, so some of those are that way because of, of the way they're written.
I didn't mean to get bogged down.
That's okay.
So I do have a, I do have a question, I was, the only, uh, the only, uh, policy that I received in our packet was just the board member conflict of interest policy, will we be able to read these before we approve them?
Find them on the website, they're, they're posted, all of them are posted, um. Yeah, the tobacco one definitely says, and it's, it's member school districts in it. But we can go back and, and make sure, and that's just a matter of wordsmith.
Yeah, it was a wordsmith, that's why I didn't mean to get bogged down, and it, it's not gonna change the substance in any way of, of
If it's a typo, we can certainly change a typo.
So.
Okay, any questions?
Then look like this. So we have a motion on the floor to approve policies, A1. What's A1?
Board member conflict of interest.
B1.
Which is substitute teachers.
B2.
Volunteers and work-study students.
B5.
Employee unlawful harassment.
B7.
Tobacco prohibition.
And C6.
Home study students.
Is there any other questions? And we'll move to vote, David?
Yes, Molly.
Thank you, Priscilla.
Yes.
Ian?
I'm gonna abstain.
Margot?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Okay, those policies are approved. Ian, just to help you, um, because I wouldn't know if I hadn't gone through this process, but, um, so the policy, we already had like a policy for one of the, for all of these.
Yes.
But then, when you go into the Vermont School Board Association, you look at the policy as it is written now, and then sometimes we change a little wording to make it fit our district, but it's, it's just, all we're trying to do is just keep up with the times, you know, sometimes laws change, things change. Um, you know, we might have a smoking policy where it said nothing about vaping in it, because when it was written, vaping didn't even exist. Um, so that's what we are, we're just trying to get them up to date.
I, I understand, and I understand too, that there, there's a, a hardworking committee out there who's, who's reviewing all this, and that it was, uh, you know, approved by the supervisory union, who's all had opportunities to read these too, I, I was, I did not want to get in the way of it, I just didn't feel comfortable.
No, I just, it'd help, you know, finding them, we certainly would, would help you get there, because it is quite a process, I, I wouldn't have, unless, until I spent many nights staring at my iPad trying to do them all, it's, but they're really not just getting them up to speed, that's all.
I was a little more involved with the policy committee earlier in the year, and I know how hard they're working, so again, I didn't want to get in the way of it, I just, in the moment, just didn't feel comfortable.
Help quite good.
And we missed you, if you could use any extra help, anytime. Um, we do have, um, a couple that are coming up that are new policies that are not ones that were in ours, but
Yeah, that's why we're doing them. Thank you, Priscilla. Uh, date for the next regular meeting, I think we figured out it's gonna be March 28th. Um, because we'll have a reorganization meeting, um, that I don't think we have a date on that yet, do we, Andy?
I think we were gonna use your regular schedule.
The 14th?
The 14th, yes.
Okay. The 14th will be a reorganizational meeting, and then March 28th will be our next actual meeting. And we have a couple things on that agenda already, we're gonna do, uh, six, the unfinished business, um, Haver donation update and the Curtis Reed discussion, and then if anyone has anything else that they would like on that agenda, um, please email it to me and we'll get it on there. Okay, we have no executive session tonight. So director's comments, David?
Thank you, Molly. Um, as I think this board is, um, aware, shortly after the first of the year, I filed a, a freedom of information request on Andy as the custodian of the WNESU servers, for what I have continually referred to as primary documentation from Haver as to what Haver's intent was with their donation. And Andy, through his credit, got right on it, got, oh, I don't know, maybe 200, uh, emails, and one of those emails, uh, yielded a very interesting scrap of direct documentation from Haver, and it comes from an email on September 5th from math teacher Tim Clark to Principal Hodgson, and it says as follows, here is the paragraph I read to you in August. My foundation, and by the way, um, this is from, um, make sure I get her name right, Maureen Haver. And, uh, Maureen Haver goes on to say, my foundation is simply known as the Haver Family Foundation. I'll be very interested to see what ideas emerge from your meeting with the principal. Mind you, Maureen is writing to Tim Clark. I'm not exactly sure what the grant amount would be this year, but it would be around $200,000 to give you a ballpark figure. If we could come up with a good idea, uh, which could be continuing, I'd like to name it after my husband George J. Feeney. His background was mathematics, statistics, and operations research, and an early innovator in computer science. While he ran corporate strategy at GE in New York, he worked with John Kemeny at Dartmouth, and he was the first to use Dartmouth Me Sharing from a location off the Dartmouth campus. George later commercialized Me Sharing and created the first private worldwide computer network. I need to back up here just a moment and read you one of those sentences one more time. If we could come up with a good idea, uh, which could be continuing, that's critical language, because I read that as an offer of a continuing grant from Haver. So he, here's the problem, here's the problem. After two and a half years, that's the only direct documentation which has come up from Haver, not even a cover letter, uh, that came along with a $250,000 check. Um, that cover letter may very well be in a file cabinet, uh, BFUHS, but, um, we still really don't have a good sense of Haver. But I'm telling you that I am developing a very good sense of the fact that we have badly mishandled, um, this donation. Um, uh, it's something anybody with access to the internet can do, I pulled the 990 for the year 2020 on the Haver Family Foundation. Um, that was a family foundation with $16 million, um, in capital that made $667,000 worth of disbursements that year. Um, we have failed miserably with Haver, and unfortunately, um, I'm going to now reread you, um, Kathleen Breyer's Six Points of Light. One, who solicits gifts on behalf of BH, BFUHS, that person needs to keep a record of all interactions with the donor organization. Big fail. This includes phone, email, and personal meetings with the donor organization. Copies of proposals are also saved in the donor's records. Where are those donors' records? Two, uh, where do you keep donor records? We don't have to worry about that, because apparently we don't have any. Do you have a donor database? Well, we know the answer to that too, don't we? Who is responsible for maintaining them? Three, what, who records gifts in your system? Do you set up fund accounts for these gifts? Okay, well, that's one out of three so far. Uh, four, who sends out acknowledgement letters that include IRS information about charitable donations, and includes the gift amount and date of receipt? Well, I have a strong feeling that's also a huge fumble on the part of, um, this school. Five, who manages the contracts, terms of the grant gift? I don't think we know the answer to that question. Six, who stewards a donor or foundation and submits progress reports on a timely basis? Well, I can't answer that one either. Um, I have had email communication with Andy, who suggested that maybe it's time we set up a Haver committee, and maybe it's time, or maybe it's too late. I think we need to have a serious talk here, admit that we fumbled this football since the kickoff, and maybe perhaps what we should do is make up the $13,000 we spent frivolously on BYU online classes that are part of our high school budgeting, and give it back. Um, let's, uh, let's have that conversation, let's get that committee going and start talking about these things, which I think that our performance has been so miserably poor on, and I will also have to add, um, administration's done a pretty good job of making sure that this peanut hasn't turned up under any of the three shells we've been trying to look on. Thank you, Molly.
Thank you, Priscilla.
It's been a tough year. It's been a tough year for our students, for our staff, for our administration, and for our board. And our parents out there that are doing everything they can to keep their students in school and still manage to do their jobs as parent and as worker in the community. We need some patience. We need some understanding. And we need compassion and kindness. Let's all of us work for that. Thank you.
Ian?
I'm just gonna second what Priscilla said, thank you.
Margot?
I'm all set, thank you.
Margot, is your term up, are you running?
Yes. My term is up this, and I did submit a ticket on the ballot.
Thank you. Brenda?
Just thank you, uh, Priscilla, for heading up the, uh, coordination of the policies and all of the committee work. I haven't been able to attend, bring many of the meetings, but, but thank you for all of that work, and it was, it was, um, refreshing, I guess, to hear the audit made in such a way that we could understand it, and I hope that we move forward positively in a lot of these issues.
Okay, I think our, our boys' basketball team, that's, that they've got such a, um, a lot of wins. I'm wondering, got a couple questions to John, and I know you don't have to answer me, but maybe you'd send me an email tomorrow. I'm wondering, and I know there's a lot too loud to, that have this question, you know, how, how can we support our boys, you're talking about having two, um, two final games at, in our gym, um, I unders, I, I totally understand that we're in a, the mass program and everything. When I hear that not too many people from outside of the public are coming, you know, how many are, how many are safely allowed in the gym? I'm not asking you, I'm just, I'm just throwing this out there, because, um, you know, I, I think that there's people out there in the public that would love to be able to support their kids, and, um, we have a really big gym, and we got two sides of bleachers, and, and just, just really wondering what we can do, because, you know, there's nothing like, you know, having that gym just rocking up and down, and I get that, you know, the world's not gonna let us do it, maybe the way Molly thinks we ought to do it, but I'd just love to see us, you know, do something where we open it right up and, you know, I don't know, I, I, I have in my, I have a vision of what I'd like to see, but it's not my, it's not my decision to be made, but um, I would love to see us do something so people could come in, even if they had to sit in, you know, pods or whatever, um, but I, I think that, you know, we have some, we have a lot of, and there's probably a lot, I was glad, glad to hear that maybe some of the kids are gonna be able to go. I mean, that was, that was some of the funnest parts of basketball games is, is watching how excited the students got at watching their friends and their classmates and, you know, succeeding out on a court. I mean, there's been times where I've been in that gym, or spent jumping up and down, and it's, you know, just, I don't know, it does something for me, and I'm pretty sure it does something for a lot of people in the community. And I realize that it's a little thing for, you know, what most people are, you know, maybe working really hard to, to make happen and make things, you know, go the way people want to see them go, but it's huge for the community. So not, I don't want you to, you know, tell me something over the radio that maybe we shouldn't do, but I'd like to really think about what we could do, how we could make it so that we're supporting people, um. So that, that's all I got on the mask thing, I know that we're in a weird situation right now, but I hope someday I hear that it's all over and done with, and we can go back to normal. I got a terrier costume in my cellar that's gonna start smelling like the wood stove pretty quick, if I can't wear it and get sweaty in it. Um, so I thank everyone. This was a, a good meeting. Um, I told everybody that my term was up, and it is, I did send in a petition, but I don't know if somebody's running against me or not, but if I come back next month, that's great, and if I don't, thank you everyone for your support. Meeting is adjourned.